All right, we are now being recorded. It is 6:00 on Monday, June 8th, and this is your Fort Mill Town Council Regular Meeting, being held virtually as we continue to work to set up the opportunities to get back to some form of normal, and we will continue to work towards that. If you are hearing this, we certainly have live viewing online. If you go to www.fortmillsc.gov, you should be able to find the link to our meeting. We're calling to order. Everybody like to say a pledge of allegiance? I'll start. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ronnie, would you like to give our invocation?
Glad to.
Thank you.
Father, as we come to you tonight, we pray for your blessings upon this meeting. We pray for your guidance and your direction as we go through this trying time. We pray that you guide us through this. We pray that you be with us, give us the wisdom, and we give you the praise and glory for it all. In your holy name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you so much. Thank you all for joining us this evening. We have a number of staff present. We have council members present, and as we vote this evening, we will do so by a roll call so that we can assist our town clerk in ensuring that she's able to document the type of votes that we have. Virginia, thanks always for being here. I really look forward to the world returning to normal when we get to see you. So with that, council members, you've been provided the minutes of the May 26, 2020 council meeting. Do I have any deletions, additions, or changes? Hearing none, do I have a motion?
I move for approval.
All right, that would be Larry voting for approval. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, I have an approval and a second. Larry, you vote yes?
I vote yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
I vote yes. Ronnie?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Trudy, has Trudy joined us?
Yes, okay.
Trudy, you have? Okay, so we've got Trudy.
I have, yes.
Hi, Trudy, are you voting yes to approve the minutes from May 26?
Yes.
Thank you. That is unanimous vote to approve those minutes. Thank you. Public comment, as with everything else, we have shifted to accommodate as much as possible with communications. Our public comments may be submitted in writing to the town clerk via mail at 200 Tom Hall Street, Fort Mill, South Carolina, 29715, or by email. The address is VURGESS@fortmillsc.gov. When submitting a comment, please include your name and address for the record. All public comments received at least one hour prior to the start of the meeting will be presented to town council by staff during the information discussion portion of the meeting. I think previously I've probably read right over that last sentence and jumped into those right now. So Davy, do we have any comments or questions from the community?
Yes, ma'am, we have two public comments I would like to read aloud.
Okay.
First comment is from Krista Demeny, and forgive me if I said her last name incorrectly, D-E-M-E-N-Y.
Okay.
Krista resides at 325 Kennebell Place, Fort Mill, South Carolina, 29715. Her comment tonight is in regard to Banks Athletic Park along Sparkling Brook Way. Dear Mayor Savage and Council, I have lived in Fort Mill for a year and a half. I came here to Waterside because of the natural beauty of the trees. Hearing the birds, squirrels, and deer are so peaceful. My neighbors and I have several concerns regarding the Banks Park. Number one, the parking lots will be right behind the townhouses. We would like you to make in consideration, that we'd like for you to take that in consideration, that we do not want a view of a parking lot. There is a infringement on the drawings dated 2020 for Banks Road and on the north side, Northern Tools, and west of the park, but not on Sparkling Brook Parkway. There is already a natural buffer of trees that hides the parking and noise from the playground for the townhouses. Number two, overflow parking on Sparkling Brook Parkway. Please do not allow any parking on Sparkling Brook. Again, with the townhouses backyard facing and being so close to Sparkling Brook, we do not want the noise of cars being able to park. Walter Elyche Park Parking Lot has had issues with vehicle break-ins, and we are afraid of this happening here. Sparkling Brook Parkway already has problems with speeding. Any parking on Sparkling Brook could possibly cause accidents. Speeding cars coming down around the corner from the triple branch trail could have the potential of a car/truck losing control and driving into a townhouse unit. Please keep all parking confined to inside the park. Number three, we would like gates to be installed to close the entrances to the park so no cars or guests will be permitted to park or hang out when the park closes. Number four, walking trail. A walking trail would be a nice added feature. The terrain you are working with is difficult with the stream and the hills, but let's take full advantage of all the parks to give us. Thank you for your time and consideration of your concerns. Looking forward to watching baseball games and having another beautiful park in Fort Mill. Respectfully, Waterside residents. That is the first public comment.
Okay, I think it's an interesting and informative note. I think for those that are listening or watching as this is taped and rerun, the particular park in question is in the Waterside Development. Our development agreement for that park is over seven years old, and we were very fortunate that the developer gave us that section of land to build the ball fields that we will be losing at the complex. So the plans to build the park precede any of the construction that occurred in the actual development itself. We certainly can take those concerns, and as we move forward with the construction of that park, we certainly can look at those, and we want everyone to have an enjoyable park to visit, and we certainly want to coexist carefully and not bother anyone's right to a peaceful life. So thanks for the comment, and Davy, if you would take those concerns and put them in the discussion folder for our continued work on that park, that would be great.
Yes, ma'am, I'll do that.
Any further comment or question? All right, hearing none. What's our second letter? You said you had two.
Yes, ma'am. Second public comment is from Marsha Jones. She resides at 101 Nob Hill Court, Fort Mill, South Carolina, 29715. To whom it may concern, I would like to see the playgrounds in Fort Mill open for use. If families want to take the risk to use a playground, they should be allowed to make this choice. Playground are cleaned by the sun and rain. If you are waiting to figure out a way to physically clean the playgrounds, they will never open. If you are waiting for the virus to disappear before opening the playgrounds, they will never open. If you are waiting for a vaccine to be developed, they will be closed for a very long time. I have five grandchildren ready to play outside on the beautiful playgrounds that Fort Mill has available. It's sad to see the orange tape blocking these playgrounds. Please consider opening the playgrounds. Thanks.
Well, that's a very pertinent comment, as I believe we have an item on our agenda to discuss the use of those parks, so we'll be discussing that and hopefully making a decision on that this evening. So thank you so much for the very nicely written note, and hopefully we'll be able to make a decision that will make everybody happy. With that, we will move to presentations. There are no presentations this evening, so we will go into old business items. Old business item number one, consideration to allow youth and adult sports leagues to resume practicing on town-owned facilities beginning June 6, 2020, with competitive play resuming June 22, 2020. Our expert is Brown Simpson. I need a motion to open this particular item.
Make a motion to accept old business item number one.
Okay, I've got Jamie with a motion, and did I hear a second?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you. Thank you. All right, Brown, would you like to talk to us about this?
Yes, ma'am. Y'all asked us to revisit this a couple of weeks ago when we made our first presentation. By the way, good evening, mayor, members of council. My apologies for starting off with that. You asked us to look at this a couple of weeks ago when we made our first presentation, and we came back and we worked on a plan to start our adult softball season, and I think you should have a copy of that. We outlined some of the things that we will have to do if you give us permission to start that here in a couple of weeks with actual games, and I'm not going to read through all of that. I think you've got a copy of all of that, and hope you had a chance to read it. I will answer any questions. Also, too, what you asked us to look at, too, was signage and how we would be able to use the fields at the complex and at W Bridge Park for softball for youth and for the adults. And we did come up with some verbiage with some signs that we will put up in certain areas at the park. And then also, too, we came up with a layout of how we would do that, and I think you've got copies of that also, too. One of the things we looked at from a safety standpoint is kind of keeping an area behind home plate, behind the dugouts, from gate to gate, respectively behind each home plate. That would be reserved for the players, for the coaches. No spectators would be allowed in that area. We would sign that off and make sure that we covered that with our participants. I looked at some different models. I've asked our staff to look at some different models that other groups are using, and that's kind of been the consensus of what would be the safest way to do this. Some of the things, other things we covered would be no handshaking, no high fives, trying to do the best we can from a standpoint of social distancing. And also, you know, we do invite fans to come and to watch, but in the same sense, too, we got, they've got to be safe when we provide these activities for our participants. The other thing, too, that we put together was a COVID-19 waiver form that will ask all participants to sign, that will have to sign them and get them back to us before they're allowed to play. So I'd be glad to entertain any questions that you guys might have, but I think you should have gotten all the information, been able to look through it, and we'll be glad to try to answer any questions that any of you might have.
Do we have questions for Brown?
What additional steps are we taking to keep the restrooms clean? I know particularly around the complex, they're not cleaned on a frequency basis. Are we going to have some extra hand washing stations around there, or have we changed our normal cadence?
Yes, ma'am. We have not opened the bathroom facilities back up yet. That's going to be also in a new action item tonight, excuse me, new action item tonight for you guys to consider also, too. But, you know, we'll have, we'll make sure our restrooms are checked. Our plan is to have staff there to make sure that those restrooms, you know, are safe and are clean also, too. So we'll make sure we do everything we can to keep those clean and also to encourage people to wash their hands frequently.
Brown, we're obviously following the policies that the Parks and Rec Departments that we are coordinating with across the county and the state, correct?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
And I think as a point of reference, Ms. Cook's comment about restrooms, I believe she's referring to the restrooms that are available for outside sports rather than those that are managed by the Y inside the complex. Is that correct, Ms. Cook?
Correct, yes. Those that are near the fields and tennis courts, they'll be used.
Because I just want to make sure the differentiation for anyone watching this, the Y is working very diligently on the processes that are required for opening the recreation facility. So we're talking about same location, just two different places in that location.
Yes, ma'am.
Any further questions?
And we're going to have, we're going to have availability of the new rules on the website, and all the teams that are going to be participating will get copies of that, Brown?
Yes, yes, sir, they will. We'll post all this stuff on our website, make sure that we get this out to all of our teams that will be participating. And, you know, if we've got somebody that violates this, the rules that we've laid down, you know, they just, they won't be allowed to play. And I think that, you know, I think that we're going to try, we're going to do our best to get all this information out and let people know this is the rules that we're going to abide by, and if you can't abide by them, then I'm sorry, you won't be able to participate and play.
And that's as it should be. You know, every sport has its own rules for a reason, and in this particular time, we can't be too careful.
I have one question. Brown, will we, what kind of verification, I mean, will they be giving the forms back team by team, or is it just going to, how's this going to work? Because I mean, I'm a guy, so I know it's hard for me to even remember to do everything. I mean, how are you going to get 500 forms? I'm just saying, speaking from my experience, you know, how's that going to work if one person doesn't have a form? Is the team going to be disqualified? I mean, I'm just trying to figure out how's this going to work?
That, we'll get all the waiver forms out to all the coaches, each team and everything, and we'll make sure before, if they're on that roster, then we've got to have a waiver form from them in hand before they are allowed to play. So we got a lot of work to do on the, on the, on the front side, making sure we get all that information back, and we will get that information back. Like I said, that team won't be allowed to play. You can only have so many players on a roster anyway, so if they don't have, in that packet form that comes back to us, if they don't have that waiver form signed, then they're not going to be allowed to play until we have that waiver form.
Okay. Thank you. Brown, I agree with Mr. Moody's questions, and in regards to having been a coach many years ago, the sooner we get those in the hands of the teams, the better, because it's certainly not the best time to be wondering whose form we have and whose form we don't the first night that play is to begin. So I think we ought to have some kind of deadline that's in advance, not just the day before that we start the games, but rather far in advance so that we feel comfortable.
Mayor, as soon as y'all give us the green light on this, if y'all give us approval, we're going to start working on that tomorrow. We'll have a deadline by the middle of next week that we've got to have that information back with the forms and everything before these teams will be allowed to, like I said, be allowed to play.
Yeah, because June 22 is two weeks away. So we're looking at a very quick turnaround for quite a number of folks. Okay? Any further questions?
They will be practicing as well, so we really want to have the waivers not necessarily before they start practice, but pretty close to it, since the exposure to be around others will be happening at that time.
Yes, ma'am. And we're going to make sure we communicate with our teams and everything on the importance of the, of the social distancing. I guess one, I could say this, you know, with softball and baseball and everything, I guess the best thing is you can social distance a lot better in those sports than you can some with some other ones. So we will make sure we get all that information out, get it, and get it back, like I said, before we start, especially competitive play.
Are we encouraging everybody to bring like their own water bottles? Yeah, because I've done both. I've had a cooler full of water, and I've had a big five gallon water jug that everybody kind of drinks out of.
Jamie, that's a great question. Yes, sir. One thing we're going to do, too, is we're going to shut the water fountain off out at W Bridge Park also, too, because one of the recommendations the CDC has made is, is that no public water fountains. So we shut that one down, and we will encourage everybody to bring their own supplies. You know, everybody brings their own glove, you got to bring your own water. Won't be a team cooler.
Okay.
Okay. Any further? Go ahead, Lisa.
Yeah, I know the same information that they were talking of trying to do six foot distancing on the bleachers for the players, and I don't know that that's actually achievable, but it does sound like what you're talking about, roping off or having a larger quote-unquote dugout area for the players to be able to spread out. Sounds like it will work, so I'm looking forward to it.
Yes, ma'am, we are, too.
We appreciate all the diligence and work that goes into this, not anything we faced before, so we're blazing a new path here. Any further questions for Brown on old business item number one? Hearing none, we have a motion to approve and a second. Larry, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
All right, Jamie?
I vote yes.
Lisa?
I vote yes.
I also vote yes. Ronnie?
Vote yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Trudy? Okay, thank you. All right, we have a unanimous vote on old business item number one. We'll now move to old business item number two, consideration to allow town-sponsored summer youth camps to resume beginning June 22, 2020. I'll need a motion to open this item.
Make a motion to accept old business item number two.
Okay, do I have a second? Okay, I've got Jamie with a motion and Trudy with a second. Brown?
Yes, ma'am, thank you again, mayor. We have various camps during the summer, and two of them that we're suggesting that we go forward with this year would be tennis camps slash lessons and our Kids on the Ball Camp. I included in your packet a summer camp information and program changes letter related to COVID-19 for these camps. It covers different things on the location of the camps, to the check-in procedures, to the social distancing requirements, to the personal protective equipment, to disinfecting, program revisions, and our checkout procedure, and then also, too, if parents just don't feel comfortable, refunds also, too. So I included that in your packet with for you. Also, we've got our participation waiver for minors, which I also included in that packet for you, too. We're requiring all of our camp participants with, with your approval tonight, if we get that, to make sure that they also read and sign the waiver form. And then also, too, I sent each individual camp, Kids on the Ball, guidelines for those camps from our director, Frank Palermo, and then also, too, our tennis camp and lessons guidelines from our tennis director, Billy McKinney. And so I included that also in, on your packet. And that pretty much summarizes our summer camps. We think that we can get these all in safely. We have limited our numbers on some of these camps due to our requirements that we thought were important to keep people safe from a social distancing standpoint. So with that, I'll be glad to answer any questions, if you have any, with these, going forward, with your approval, if you approve that tonight.
Do you have questions on the summer camps for kids? Good. We have a motion on the table to approve, and we have a second. We'll start with Trudy this time. Trudy, how do you vote? Trudy must be having technical difficulties. Chris Moody?
Yes.
No, yeah.
Thank you, thank you, Trudy. Ronnie?
Yes.
Okay, I vote yes. Lisa?
Vote to approve.
Okay, Jamie?
I vote yes.
And Larry?
I vote yes.
All right, we have a unanimous approval for old business item number two. We will move to old business item number three, second reading and public hearing. We will do the public hearing first. This is an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances for the Town of Fort Mill, Chapter Two, Administration, Article Four, Finance and Taxation, Division Four, Development Impact Fees, so as to update the development impact fees for the town as mandated by the South Carolina Development Impact Fee Act. Our expert on this is Chris Pettit. We will open the public hearing at this point.
Mayor, this is Chris. We did send out notice regarding the public hearing tonight and provided the public multiple avenues for folks to provide their comments, and for the record, we did not receive any comments on this item.
Thank you. We will close the public hearing at this time. Now I need a motion to open this item.
I make a motion to accept old business item number three.
Thank you. I need a second.
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 I got a second from Ronnie. All right, Chris, has anything changed since the first reading of this particular ordinance amendment?
Mayor, the only thing that's changed, staff did provide some clarification as to the effective date of the ordinance. First reading version noted it was effective immediately, and we've changed that to effective July 1, 2020, and that's really to give staff time to amend all of our internal documents and processes in order to implement any new fees that come out of this.
Okay. Any questions for Chris on this particular amendment?
And that, that being said, Chris, anything that's already in the pipeline for approval will go under the old rate, not the new rate, correct?
So anything that's paid up and received a permit prior to the effective date of this would, would be paying the old fees. As it's currently written, anything that hasn't received a permit and basically at that point has not paid the impact fees would be required to pay the new impact fees if it was after the date of the effective date of the ordinance.
Which is July 1, is that right?
Which, correct. As, as staff has written it, it's July 1, and another reason for that is to allow for some time for that stuff that's already been submitted to go ahead and get permitted and therefore pay the old fees.
Right. Are we seeing a tick up in permits between first and second reading, or about the same?
It's been fairly steady, no significant uptick like there was the first go-round.
Okay, thank. And communication, we'll send out, what kind of communication to the building community? You guys, I guess, have people for permits or email list, or?
We do have quite a few email lists that will provide notice that the fee's changing, and will also provide information out on our website so that anybody that asks or goes to look for it can find it as well.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions for Chris? All right, hearing none, the motion on the table is to approve old business item number three, and we have a second to that. So once again, we'll start with Trudy. Chris Moody?
Yes.
I hear Trudy, I got Trudy approving. Chris Moody, yes. Ronnie?
Approved.
Okay, I also approve. Lisa?
I approve.
Jamie?
I approve.
Thank you. Larry?
I vote to approve.
All right, unanimous approval for old business item number three. We will move to old business item number four, second reading and public hearing. Again, we'll go into public hearing first. This is an ordinance adopting the Town of Fort Mill Capital Improvements Plan for fiscal year 2019 through 2020, through fiscal year 2023 and 2024. We will open the public hearing at this time, and Mr. Pettit let me know if we, or Penelope let me know if we have any. let me know if we have any questions.
Mayor, again, we provided notice to this with multiple avenues, and for the record, we did not have any comments on this item.
Okay, we will close public hearing at this point. I need a motion and a second to open this.
I make a motion to accept old business item number four.
Thank you for being our motion guy tonight, Jamie. Do I have a second? I have a second from Ronnie. All right. Questions for Chris on old business item number four?
Chris, when I looked through the items on the list that we have for CIP projects, I didn't notice anything regarding potential work at Dobbs Bridge Park on there. I know we've got the houses that need to be moved, parking lot, various things. Is there a reason this was not included?
Yes, so until we have a clear sort of picture of what it is going to be, it's advisable not to utilize impact fee dollars because not every park project is automatically going to be eligible for impact fee dollars. So until we do have that clear picture of what it's gonna be, it is advisable not to utilize the impact fee dollars for that.
Okay, but I'm a little confused because one of the items on there was to purchase land for parks and rec, and that's not something that's been discussed with council unless I'm missing something.
I make a motion to open.
Okay, I still think we're having some technical difficulties. Chris, I'll let you answer Ms. Cook's question. I think that as we have budget meetings that are shortcoming for us to discuss capital improvements plan, and I think once again, council will vote on the order of projects, and we're gonna document that and we're all gonna sign it because we seem to have a problem with circling around and around on several of the items.
And Ms. Cook, to your question, the land for future parks was included in our prior CIP. It's been carried over into this CIP because just the purchase of additional land is pretty much guaranteed to be eligible for impact fee dollars. So we put that in there. It's really just to provide council with flexibility should an opportunity arise and there be a desire to utilize impact fee dollars, but it is not provided in there for any specific property that we have in mind today or anything of that nature.
I agree with Ms. Cook. If we're gonna add something to that list, I certainly think it's worthy of a discussion before we actually pencil it in on that list for us to approve. So if we're going to add something to it, would you please make notification to all council before, you know, we're given something to approve?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
And I also was kinda curious on the gymnasium project. I know we were talking about making some other changes, improvements, needs that we have over in at the complex area. Are we not including that for the same reason?
I thought it's in the CIP.
Only the gymnasium's included.
Are you referring to the tennis court project that we've discussed?
Tennis courts, yeah. Tennis courts, pickleball, extra parking.
So the majority of the tennis court project, as it's kinda budgeted today or been discussed today, would actually not be eligible for impact fee dollars because most of it is actually refurbishing or renewing what we currently have as tennis capacity. So there'd be only minimal addition of capacity, and that addition of capacity is what would be eligible for impact fee dollars. So that's the primary reason it's not included because only a small portion of that would even be eligible for impact fee dollars.
So rebuild is not, rebuilding something is not eligible, but new is, is that what I hear?
That is correct. You can't replace something that you already have. It has to be new and additional park capacity for it to be eligible for impact fee dollars.
So the fact that we're going from six to eight, his comment saying that only the additional two courts would be approved, the shelter area potentially could, potentially some of the parking maybe, I'm not real sure. Okay, I appreciate the clarification.
Yes, ma'am.
Do we have any further questions in regards to this particular item?
I mean, maybe I'm a little confused. So this is just basically identifying everything that we have on our capital improvements list, because I know it's much larger than this, that will qualify for impact fee money, not necessarily everything that we have in the pipeline that we wanna do. Am I understanding that correctly? Because that's what it sounded like.
That is correct. This document, the sole purpose of this document in of itself is to list out impact fee eligible projects, and by including them in this CIP, they therefore become eligible for us to spend impact fee dollars on. And our plan is to bring this forward to you annually during the budget process so that if during the budget process a new project is discussed or some of these projects aren't on the horizon, we'll revise it so that it's accurately reflecting the discussions during the budget process. So it'll come back before you in the matter of a few months for future discussion for next fiscal year and beyond.
Okay, so then this isn't reflective of everything that we have going, as Ms. Cook said, with the gym, yeah, not the gym, but the other park, the thread trail, all the other things that we have in the pipeline. This is just identifying things that we can draw money from the impact fee to. Okay, thank you.
Somebody else had a question?
Yeah. Chris Moody? It is, sorry, I was muted for a second. When looking for, through the document, you know, and identified potential Fire Station Three, Fire Station Four sites, does it really matter what sequential numerical order those are in, or if you ever flip-flop those? I'm not being too nitpicky, I'm just from my own information and curiosity, does that really matter?
I don't think we choose that. I think that comes to us from the state when they realize that we don't have enough coverage in a certain area. So it may be three, it may be seven, it may be whatever. It just depends on where the coverage is running lean.
Mr. Moody, for the purposes of this document, I had to give it a name, and I guess I could have named it Fire Station Northern Region, Western Region, but I continue with the nomenclature of two, three, and four. But you're absolutely right. It does not matter what order they come in. All that matters is it's listed in this document.
Okay, thanks.
And again, it hasn't been in the too-distant past that we didn't even have a list, a capital improvements plan. This is new. I'm really happy we're finally beginning to catch up a little bit. Still have a long way to go, but I'm happy that we have a list to be discussing, but it is still relatively new, and I know we've got a lot to work out to get it to where it's something we're all comfortable with. Further questions for Chris? Hearing none, the motion on the table is to approve old business item number four, and we have a second. Larry, how do you vote?
I'll vote for approval.
Thank you. Jamie?
I vote yes.
Lisa?
Vote yes.
Thank you. I vote yes. Ronnie?
Approved.
Chris Moody?
Yes.
And Trudy is having technical difficulties. She has texted me to say she can't hear all of our conversation, but I'll ask every time to get her vote. Trudy, can you hear and can you vote? All right, we're gonna have to have a no vote from Trudy on this one. So that gives us a six-vote yes for old business item number four. Old business item number five, second reading and public hearing and ordinance amending the zoning ordinance for the Town of Fort Mill, Article Two, Requirements by District, Section Nine, Highway Commercial District, so as to establish requirements for hospitals as a conditional use within the highway commercial district and provide other matters relating thereto. This one is with Penelope. We will open the public hearing at this point. Penelope, do you know of any public comment that we would have received?
I have not received anything public comment.
Okay, did we make this one available as well?
Yes, ma'am, it was available.
Thank you. Having no public comment, we will close the public hearing portion of this meeting, and we will go back to the second reading. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to accept old business item number five.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ronnie. All right, we have a motion and a second. Do we have questions for Penelope? And my only question would be, has anything changed since the first reading?
No, ma'am, nothing has changed.
Okay. Any questions for Penelope?
Do we have a timeframe when they will start?
At this time, Mr. Huntley, we have not received any updates from the hospital. We have, working on early grading, but no updates from the hospital at this time.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we have a motion on the table to approve old business item number five. Trudy, can you hear us? Chris Moody, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Thank you. Ronnie?
Yes.
I vote yes. Lisa?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Thank you so much. New business item number one, potential Town of Fort Mill Farmers Market, Jocana Hester. Do I have a motion on this item?
I make a motion to accept new business item number one.
Okay, do I have, and I've got a second by Ronnie. All right. Okay, Jocana, fill us in. Davy, are you with them?
Yes, I'm with them. Seems like Virginia, Jocana is having technical difficulty as well. So Mayor, there's town staff is looking to put together a farmer's market for this summer, something we've been trying to do for a few years now. Staff working on this plan, and we've met quite a few times. Information on the farmer's market and the guidelines that we would go by, following the guidelines along with the CDC recommendations. We have developed policies for this market, but it basically is we would start with about, we would provide ten tents and utilize the veterans' lot, which is on White Street in Fort Mill, and we would set up in the grass area that is between the parking lot for veterans' lot and Claiborne Street. So if you can visualize that piece of property, it makes a natural triangle. So this farmer's market would be set up in some form or fashion along with that property. We would utilize the parking lot itself for, as a parking lot for this market. We have developed an application process for any local farmers, anyone that, or anyone that would have a food product or slash, you know, agriculture product, flowers, maybe, maybe even handmade items. They would submit an application with what they would be selling, explaining how they would meet all of the guidelines that we are putting forth, and then we would pick and choose how many who would be eligible to participate. We would love for this program, if it gets approved this year in the summer, we would love to see it grow, maybe even this year, but we would like to see it grow over the next few years. So we took, we have done some studies with some of the markets, farmer's markets in the area. Jocana went out on her own and studied some of these markets, see how they were making them work during COVID-19. We feel like we can put on something as well, if not better, with this year's program. So again, you were provided all of the documentations that we have gone by, what our process would be to implement this market and how we would monitor it as.
Excellent. I really appreciate Jocana's work to determine the types of circumstances ahead of time rather than waiting until we approve it, so I think that's great. Thank you so much. Questions for Davy?
I hate that we're not sharing the actual presentation for others that are watching and seeing. I know the link for the map wasn't showing in my packet for some reason. Have we had, since the farmer's market that used to happen in First Baptist Parking Lot, have we continued to have people reaching out, requesting the opportunity for this? I know I've experienced many farmer's markets and enjoy them, but are we getting feedback from the community?
Each spring, we'll hear from a handful of local folks that would like to sell products, and we've entertained the idea over the last few years of putting together a farmer's market. For whatever reason, we've just been able to actually make that happen until this year. We have, again, COVID-19 threw us, threw some challenges at us. We know that not, you know, as things are, orders are relaxed by the governor, everyone's looking to get out of their home and to do things, and do things socially, while socially distancing. So we feel like with this plan that we'll have at least five local groups or salespeople that would like to join, and then we would take applications for anyone else outside of that. You know, the map itself, I'm sorry that the link did not work, but again, it's, it was a map kinda showing in a triangle of tents, five on each, along with the property, and then, of course, we would provide restrooms, we would provide handwashing stations for that site.
And I'm sorry, can y'all hear me?
Yes. Hi, Jocana.
Yes.
Okay, hey, it's Jocana. I dialed in so I could say, if y'all need me to answer any questions, I'm happy to do that.
Jocana, I think you were probably in transit to dialing in when I was thanking you for aggressively and on your own going out and studying how others are able to safely host a farmer's market. So thank you so much for doing that. It makes our efforts a lot more productive.
Yeah, I agree.
What's the target date for the potential here? If we approve it?
Well, we were, yeah, we were hoping to be able to start it on June 20.
Okay.
And Mayor, that, we would like, that's our target date, but depending on if you approve it tonight, we would make an order for the tents tomorrow, and then it would be based on how quickly we could get those in. But typically, the shipments would only take about, that's what we're anticipating.
Okay. Okay. Questions for Jocana or Davy?
I was just gonna say, we'll be ordering sinecades as well to have throughout the market with our guidelines for people to follow for the COVID-19 guidelines right now as well.
Excellent. Excellent, thank you.
The cost that we have associated with ordering the tents, the restrooms, the sanitation that'll need to take place, is that gonna be offset from fees that we're charging for these booths? I didn't notice a fee outlined in our packet.
My understanding, my understanding from earlier question is that every person there will have to have a business license. So I don't know, is the cost coming out of general funds, Davy and Jocana, or is it something that we will be able to offset with the business license to do so?
Mayor, this, that's a good question. Mayor, that's a good question, Ms. Cook, but this has been viewed as an event for quite some time. So the funding is coming out of the general fund, out of our events, events budget, and we budget that amount each year, a certain amount each year, just to keep, to have a farmer's market running. Again, we have not been able to do that over the last few years. So this is money set aside as an event. We want to draw people to the downtown area, again, safely and practically socially distancing. But it's a, it's a program to, again, to highlight Fort Mill and the downtown area and bring residents and visitors in to have a quality of life event.
And Ms. Cook, I bet we have some monies from Strawberry Festival that didn't occur, some of the other events that we've had to cancel. I don't know, but I would think it would come from the same budget that the banners on Main Street and the plants come from. I would like to think.
Yeah, I hope those events come back next year. But yes, just wondering if there was a fee for those attending, you know, having a booth at farmer's market. And then, Mr. Broom, hearing you say that we're gonna pick who's going to be there, it's not a first come, first served. Can the same people have it over and over every day? I mean, every week? Every, you know, do they do a monthly pass? Just trying to understand how new people can get involved with it if we have repetitive users. I know we probably are gonna have some anchors. I have to assume Springs Farms has been contacted and will want to participate. But I think there's probably others. Just kind of trying to understand that process a little bit.
That's a good question. And what we would wanna do is first and foremost, try to be as fair as possible to give everyone an opportunity to participate at some point. Again, we would want to run a very, a very good market. So if there was some participants on a weekly basis that are high traffic, and are very popular with the Fort Mill residents and visitors, we would want to keep them on a weekly basis. But what we would do is, again, we are in hopes of this growing past 10. So if we have 10, that's great. If we have 12 or 13, maybe we make it work and we can, we have the flexibility to expand it past 10 if need be. We just may have, we would only provide 10 tents a year and just have any additional folks bring their own tents and set up. Again, this is our first time we've been able to do this for quite some time, so we're gonna kind of, even though we have guidelines for it, and want to make it as successful as possible. So we will kind of just take a case-by-case basis when we have applications come in.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, we have the motion on the floor to approve new business item number one. We'll start with Larry. How do you vote?
I vote to approve.
Thank you. Jamie?
Vote approved.
Lisa?
Vote approved.
I vote to approve. Ronnie?
Vote to approve.
Chris Moody?
Vote approved.
Trudy, in the hinterlands? All right, that's a six vote to approve new business item. Oh, thank you, Trudy. That's a seven vote. Whoa. All right, we've got new business item number two, consideration to allow the reopening of town-owned park playgrounds beginning June the 12th, 2020. Do I have a motion for this item?
I make a motion to accept new business item number two.
Okay.
Second.
And I have a second. Thank you both for being conscious here and doing this. Brown Simpson is our person. Brown, what would you like to say?
Mayor, I included in your packet the best guidelines for opening playgrounds. One of the things that we were asking if you guys approved this tonight is we'll wait and do this on Friday of this week. This will give us enough time to get our appropriate signage put together, just reminding people about the guidelines that we're suggesting with the parks, I mean, excuse me, with the playgrounds. I did include best guidelines for opening our playgrounds. And I think the biggest thing out of those guidelines that I sent to you in your packet is we're going to place, and this came from a full recommendation from the South Carolina Recreation and Parks Association, and also under Governor McMaster's guidelines, was we would place signage at all the playgrounds that says "Use at Your Own Risk." And we would also have all these guidelines, and I've listed also too for you, excuse me, on our website, and also on the town Facebook page. We would work with our communication director to do that, and make sure we get all that information out. But I'll be glad to answer any questions if you have any on the guidelines that I sent you guys.
Okay, do we have any questions?
My only question again would be, how many additional wash stations are we gonna have for hands or sanitizer? Just the basic cleanliness, are we stepping up and increasing beyond what our standard capacity has been?
Are you talking about, Ms. Cook, for the playgrounds?
Yes, playground areas.
Yes, ma'am. We don't currently have any hand washing stations at our playgrounds. One of the things that I posted in the best guidelines for, was for parents to, you know, have kids be able to wash their hands. That's why we're gonna, we're gonna need to open our bathrooms also too. And also for people to bring their own hand sanitizer, excuse me, hand sanitizer also to use before and after they use the playgrounds, if soap and water is not available.
And Ms. Cook, speaking to your point, yes, for our, many of our parks already have restroom facilities, so the hand washing can take place. For Walter Y., Elijah Park, we do not have that at this time, so we could provide that on a daily basis, at least through time hours.
And let me just add to, one of the things that we're gonna look at from our maintenance staff doing as much as we can in the mornings is to wash the railings and high-touch areas with soap and water as much as we can. We might not be able to do that on the weekends, but we will do that during the week. We'll do the best we can with that. But the biggest thing we're gonna encourage is for people to, you know, bring some hand sanitizer parents when they use the playground, after they use it, just practice some good hygiene.
I see that that's gonna be difficult with children. I mean, they're known to put their hands in their mouth, their eyes, their nose, you know, and I get the hazard, but I also see they're outside. Sun, it tends to have, I've read, I don't know if that's true or not, by the way, because I'm not real sure anything we read is true, but I've read that heat is an enemy, and that's a, that's a good thing for outdoors. Brown, have other areas opened their playgrounds?
Yes, ma'am. T K. In our county, has, T K. has opened their playgrounds. They've been open a couple weeks. The town of Clover also has their playgrounds open. I talked to the city of York last week, Carolyn Leaks, the director there, and they're in the process of opening their playgrounds. And also, Rock Hill is also looking at that too.
Because, you know, we don't have to follow suit, but it is good to know if someone else has done it, if they've encountered any problems.
But we are following the, we are following the recommendations from the governor. We're not going rogue.
That's correct.
Yes, ma'am.
That is correct. I think every decision we've made to date, we've been in lockstep with what we've been asked to do from our state government. And we look to them because they have resources we do not. And we're hopeful that that direction, that's what we have to follow. That's the best we can do. Any further questions? Hearing none, the motion on the table is to approve new business item number two, and we have a second. Larry, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Jamie?
I vote yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
I vote yes. Ronnie?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes, it's gonna be a lot of happy mothers.
I know. Trudy? Oh, my. Okay.
Read her lips, she said yes.
Yes.
Okay, all right. Yay. Okay, since we handled the public comments in the front end of the meeting, we can strike this one. We do not have an executive session scheduled before adjournment. I think we all are experiencing now for several months the pressure of, you know, being quarantined and then no quarantine, but social distancing. I think it's very difficult for everyone. So Larry, any happy news? Any happy something?
Oh, everything I got's happy.
All right, then. Way to go. Jamie?
I am so happy it's summertime and that the kids are out of school. I know that's been trying on them, not being in school, but being in school. So I got a neighborhood full of happy kids that have been riding bikes and running like crazy people for the past week and a half now.
I love it. That's great. Lisa?
Just wanna brag on my niece, Caitlin Bauer, who graduated from high school through all of this COVID. She's one of those seniors that experienced a lot of resilience to get to this point. So very proud of her and all the other seniors in our community, both high school and college, different times, but certainly memorable.
I agree. I agree. Congratulations to Caitlin. All right, I'm gonna wait till last. Trudy, let's take a shot and see if you can get on there.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, okay. My happy news or happy thoughts is, I'm just glad this is just about over, or at least part of it is, and it's just great to wake up every morning.
Absolutely, absolutely. Chris Moody?
I'm just thankful that we're all healthy. I got, I left the house one time today. I went into the old J and M Mart and got me a drink right before our meeting, and sat at the booth for 10 minutes and cleared my mind. And I think, well, I get to serve with all you guys. It's an honor and a privilege to live here in Fort Mill and in this great country we have.
Wonderful. I agree with all comments. I have one issue to at least touch on. Late last week, unknown to us, by the way, the Department of Transportation made a change to the red light at the head of Main Street, the intersection of Main 160 Tom Paul. We were not notified of that particular change, and it just appeared that you could no longer take a right at the head of Main onto Tom Hall when the light was red. We have seen some backups of traffic. I immediately contacted several people and found that the Department of Transportation had received a number of comments about the safety of crossing to get onto Main, pedestrian crossing. So they felt it was the right change to make, and they altered the timing for the lights. We will be meeting with them in regards to whether that's a good thing so far or not, because it's really hard when the train's down there, that we don't have any way of relieving traffic on Main Street. So I wish there were alternatives, and certainly will go to the end of my term looking for an alternative to try to slow down the traffic on Main and to give more leeway to the folks that run their businesses on Main and keep us all happy there. So I just wanted to let you know that the town had no knowledge of that. We did post something on our website to let everybody know, and please be aware and cautious at that red light until we determine if that is a long-term change or a short-term change. My happy is that we all are here. I'm going to be a grandmother again in two and a half weeks, and I'm pretty excited about that, but I can't lie, it's really, really hard with all this COVID. We think, you know, all of us, I think, because I can go outside a little more, or I'm still wearing a mask to the grocery store, it's still a dangerous virus. And I am so grateful for the patience of all of you and of our community, as we work hard to protect each other. It's important. I wanna be here for my grandchild, and it puts everything into a new perspective. For the last one, we were all able to be at the hospital in the waiting room, and we can't do that this time. We'll have to be notified while we're out in the parking lot. So even though it might feel a little better, it's still a difficult time for all of us, and I'm so grateful. I wouldn't wanna do it with anyone else. So thanks so much to our staff, to our employees, to each council member. You guys are great, and I'm just so grateful for all that you do for our community. So with that, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Did I have a happy?
Oh, Ronnie, did I leave you out of happy? I heard you had this oil spill in your yard. Wasn't sure you had a happy.
That's not my happy.
Sorry. I'm sorry. Go, Ronnie, go.
My eighth youngest grandchild graduated South Pointe High School this year, and COVID-19 was a blessing to him because he got to finish his school online when he was fixing to quit. So we got him graduated.
Wow, that was good.
Everybody has their own path.
That's right. So we're happy around here.
That's wonderful. Congratulations to all graduates and to their parents. I know it was, I think Davy had a graduate this year. I know there were hard decisions to try the very best that we could as a community to celebrate that. We'll just have to keep celebrating it until we're all free from this stinking virus. So congratulations to all that graduated this year. Did I miss anybody else? Ari, with that, anybody want to adjourn?
I'll adjourn.
All right, I've got Chris Moody with a motion to adjourn and Trudy with a second. Larry, how do you vote?
Yes.
All right, Jamie?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
I'm saying yes. Ronnie?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And Trudy?
Yes.
All right, with that, we're adjourning. Please, everyone, have a safe and wonderful week. Thanks a bunch.